Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is October 6, 2022. This is a regular meeting for us. And we have a full complement of commissioners here. And just before we start, I do want to welcome some new members to our team. To my right, we do have June Daly, who's a regular seated member. To my left, I have Andrea Miller, who's a regular seated member. And welcome to Nikki Zabinski, Zabinski, who is new alternate. Of course, we have our right of commission here. So I just wanted to greet them all, and they've chosen one heck of a meeting to join us on. But it's, it's, it's all good. We work as a team. All right, before we continue with the regular meeting, I'm just going to ask the folks who are zooming in, make sure that you are muted. If there is a portion in the public hearing that you'd like to participate in, that's great. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record clearly before continuing with your remarks. This way we'll have a nice, easy, fluid record of the meeting tonight. So thank you for that. The next up will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask everyone to rise for that. Flag is here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which is Canada. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so we'll go right to the business at hand. We have the review and approval of minutes for September 1st, 2022. For the commission that was here in present, do we have any corrections to the minutes? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
I'll second my motion.
Second by Mr. Rogan. Thank you for the discussion. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed and abstaining? Abstaining. Okay.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Abstaining. All right, thank you. Moving on to commission business, request of Paul Pryor for a 90-day extension to file an approved subdivision lot 15K, block 17 and 0 Heritage Drive. Now, Maureen, I'll ask you about this.
So several months back, you approved the subdivision at the end of Heritage Drive for two lots of the Heritage Drive we finished into lot 15K. They need more time to file their Mylar, Mylers need to be filed within 90 days. And then they're allowed with extension periods perhaps. So falls within the extension periods allowed.
Or do we have any other outstanding issues other than that?
No, they've been working, they've been working with staff, working on elevations, drainage, getting over the gas line is the primary hurdle that you might all remember. Those were the extension, probably one of the reasons for what it's done initially when they, when they built out the rest of the development. And so he's been consistently working on things with regard to that. They just did not file Mylar at this point. So we're asking for an extension.
All right, so.
I don't have the date. That extension will expire. Get that with me right now.
Okay. Well, no, we're, I'm appreciative of the fact that you flew in from your conference to be with us tonight.
Thank you.
And I know that Dylan is relieved too. As am I. All right, so. I'll make a motion to approve the 90-day extension. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
I'll second my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan, for the discussion on that matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So move. Onto new business. I know, I know. Site plan amendment application of Rocky River Realty for alterations to the gas train, gas training portion of the existing training yard, including construction of a new, plus or minus 3,400 square foot building, relocation of two sheds on concrete pads, and associated site storm water improvements at 107 Sheldon Street. Good evening. How are you today? I imagine you're here for the applicant.
Correct. Yes, my name is Brian Phillips, here on behalf of the applicant. I was running the area at 5551 Moore Drive, April 8. Mister Fellers. So just to get oriented to the site. This is the EverSource campus, which is to the east of the Turnpike. And this particular project is at the southern end of the campus, right along Demming Road. And this area is the, the training yard where they, you know, do electric training and gas training. And this particular amendment, I'll just flip to our site plan. So north is pointing to the left. Demming Road is down here on the right off of the page. So this is all within the campus. This is an interior driveway down here. So this area that we're looking at is the gas training area. It's essentially, you know, a mock-up of a typical sort of residential street where they train, you know, different scenarios of gas leaks and whatnot. So currently, within this footprint of the building, there are two sheds and a pop-up tent. And the proposed building is to, essentially a classroom to further the, the training operations. So they'll just be learning in an indoor space. And then the two sheds, which are currently within this footprint, will be relocated elsewhere on the site. Also, within this package, we did receive approval from the, in the wetlands to perform some maintenance on two existing stormwater basins. So we do have that approval. And other than that, that's, that's pretty much the bulk of the project. This building and that concrete walkway relocating those sheds.
It begs the question, where are you? Have you determined where these sheds will be moved to?
Yes, that's, these two symbols here are the relocated sheds.
Where would they be for?
They're within the footprint of the proposed building. They're, they're sort of grade back. But they're, they're right here, and they'll be relocated here in order to accommodate the building.
Oh, okay.
That it's, I don't know if you can see it.
That's all right.
Here, this one.
It's well within the site.
Correct.
So it's not.
Yep.
So we'll bring up the overall site.
We must have it on the jumpy side. I've got one more.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm familiar where the poles are, where they do their practice sessions on that. Where is this relocation to that?
The poles are right here.
So is this on the opposite side of the road?
Um, no, this is directly adjacent to that area. I'm not sure if we're talking, are we talking about offering up or doing?
Right, well, I used to work in our facility, so I know you go down through the back way, you got pole land over there.
Correct.
You got a spot of land over here. Is this on the left-hand side?
This is all within that pole area.
Okay.
You know, this, this whole training yard was built about six or seven years ago. So it's, you know, it's all contained within this area. That's it. We're, we're talking about just putting a building, you know, alterations all within the existing footprint. So there's no encroachment beyond the existing training.
So just to follow up to her question, where is Demming Road then?
Demming Road is down here on this page.
Oh.
On the page.
If you look at, if I may.
Sure.
If you look on your screen. Here, Demming Road would be down here somewhere. And this is the driveway that goes up from Demming Road into the, what you would say, the office complex. And along that road from Demming Road, on the right-hand side is, this is that whole area. And this has been substantially a bunch of sheds. And now they want this substantial building within that. And, you know, his presentation as far as the other guilty process. But that's within that area, on the right side of their access road, driving up towards the map box. The Workhorse Housing Metro Realty project is at the top of the screen, to the west of this. Whatever else on the screen, for further orientation.
Any other questions?
Maureen, do you have any comments or concerns?
Good question. I didn't really, and, um. I didn't just throw her. Because I didn't find a deck at all. But I really didn't, I did have some questions for him. And, you know, he addressed those, and I maybe just addressed some in the presentation as well, but. The narrative. And that was in your packages, I believe. And those were the, the, the questions I really wanted to understand was how it was being used now because they needed a permanent structure. And was it turning into a classroom space? And could then potentially be final offices? And, you know, was the youth still training? Or was the youth, where was the youth going to go? And that's what his narrative responded to. And I believe those, that was just. So my questions were really adjusted.
Commission, any other questions or comments or what's the pleasure of the mission?
I will make the motion. I will make the motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Rogan. I second, seconded by Andrea Miller. And for the discussion, the question, and all of us in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So move. Onto the public hearing.
Dylan, good evening.
Good evening. Um, okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. Go ahead. Yes, please. Yeah, Commissioner Sigma, are you online?
Okay. So I just wondered if anyone was suited. That's all.
All right, well. Okay, well, just to, to clear up, remember that I will, they note that Commissioner Biella is, Mr. Biella will be seated for Scott Hamel. Who is now resigned from the commission. And then Mr. Sigma is absent, so I would ask Nikki Zabinski to be seated for Commissioner Sigma. And if by some chance he pipes in or whatever, that will be fine. So we have a full complement.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
I meant to housekeep that before. My apologies. All right, so into the public hearing. So I will ask at the public hearing, the court of red issue record, our secretary, Brian Rogan.
Attorney General Berlin, Planning and Zoning Commission, notice of public hearing. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearing at its regular meeting on Thursday, October 6, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. In the Town Council Chamber, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Keston Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or verbally as provided below. A special permit slash site plan application of Little House Living LLC for 19 residential units, three single-family style buildings and eight duplex style buildings, and related site improvements at 1676 Berlin Turnpike MAP 22-1 Block 114 Lot 10 in the BT1 Zone, continued from September 1st, 2022. B, zone change request of 550, 554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC to change the zone of 502, 522, and 554 Berlin Turnpike MAP 10-2 Block 83 Lot 13, 13B, and 14 from Berlin Turnpike 1, BT1 to Berlin Turnpike Development, BTD. C, special permit slash site plan application of 550, 554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC for mixed-use development, including 106 residential units within a prebuilding, a retail building, and reconfiguring the parking lot for two commercial buildings and related site improvements of 502, 522, and 554 Berlin Turnpike MAP 10-2 Block 83 Lot 13, 13B, and 14. D, petition for proposed excrement to complete section 11DB Plan Residential and Field Development from the Berlin zoning regulations. Was that pleaded?
So the last item.
The last item is not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, so strike E.
Okay.
The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Keston Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Date is this 20th day of September, 2022, at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, New Britain Herald, classified advertising, such legal notices. Dates of publication, Saturday, September 24, 2022, and Monday, October 3, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Okay. So the first, the first item is a special permit, site plan application of Little House Living LLC for the 19 residential units, three single-family style buildings, eight duplex style buildings, and related site improvement at 1676 Berlin Turnpike MBL 22-1-114-10 in the BT1 Zone. This is a continuation from September 1st. Okay, so, all right, so who do we have here?
The record manager is Patrick Snow. I'm the management manager of Little House Living LLC. I'm your assistant. Hi, how are you?
Good.
We were here last month looking for permission from the commission to instruct 19 residential units. And there's a couple of additional items of the commission that asks us to look into. So first, I just wanted to go back a little bit and say that each unit on, on the proposed village has a front porch area. So as opposed to some apartments, you see there's no area where people can sit out and basically socialize. If it's a small community, they could sort of walking around, see the neighbors that they would want to see. Or potentially there's some private areas back, they don't want to see the neighbors. That's also an option for them, for, for communities. So that's what we try to offer that for a community, for front porch areas for people to stand, per sit, and just enjoy their neighbor's company. Changes in plans, it's the last meeting, are as follows. The rear yard setbacks on the southerly boundary has been increased by approximately four feet. We try to push those homes, to the south of the boundary there, up towards the street, a little bit away from the car repair shop to our south. The visitor space has been increased by 10 spaces, using some additional areas off of the roadway. There's two when they first come in, one on the left and another one in the back by Building 15. So we've increased the parking, which the neighbors had shown some concerns about regarding people not having enough parking, potentially parking in an area adjacent to the property, wanting to that, that development. So we think with additional, with 19 units and 10 additional parking spots, plus the garages, plus the driveways, we feel as if that's a, you know, substantially increase the parking, the availability for guests to come and be invited for holidays, which is a sample. The plan also shows in addition a six-foot fence all along the property line, that is southerly and westerly lines, to stop any potential people from making parking on Holly Court, more of their way up to that, to the subdivision, to this new apartment complex. I don't think that that's possible. There's a huge bank there, but we want to make sure that if someone was going to do it, they had to scale a hill, scale a fence, climb over, and they're probably not there to visit certain areas. Like keep them on as well. I'm not saying it can't happen, but we want to make it as hard as possible. The number of units on the plan remains 19. In order to maintain the social aspect of this, as I was saying before, as you look, the road is a circular road. All the porches are located towards the front, and their people have a private, I'll call them private areas. You come out of your unit, there's a fence, a six-foot fence actually between the two units. So you do have a little bit of a private area if you want privacy from your neighbor. And that's basically the overview of the plan. I'll turn over my engineering or some technical items that we discussed last month. You're welcome.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Cassidy, with Engineering for our house. Harrison Cassidy, I was for your last one also, at which time we presented the application for Little House LLC. As Patton had mentioned, there were several comments that came out of that meeting. In addition to, remind this communication, Maureen, but I thought, I was waiting for comments from Maureen. Maureen was waiting for plans from me, but we did finally get together and did become, so I had to give you a response letter with my responses and read, and the plans that you see up on the screen or the updated plans. So a few things. Patton mentioned about open space in the community areas. As we identified prior meeting, at the upper left-hand corner of the plans, there is a large lawn area, it's about 3,000 square feet. We noted this is possible open space area to be used for community gatherings, community gardens, or a playground area, place game of some sort. We haven't actually defined what would be in there, but there is an area, it's level, it's a lawn, that would be able to use by the community itself. In addition to, whereas Patton had mentioned, last meeting, there is a request, we try to pull back the units from the southerly property line. What we did is, particularly on building number 18 and 19, we shortened the driveway a little. So it's still about 22 feet overall length. That picked up about four and a half feet, additional feet, additional distance behind that building. Then we also slid buildings number 17 and 16 slightly to the north also, because of additional space. In addition to the increase in the setback in that area, we also proposed to put a six-foot high solid line fence. It would basically run down the south property line. There is a point where you see the ankle of the south property line, where there's a drainage well. That fence would follow along the top of the swell. It would interfere with the swell. So we follow the top edge where the property line is actually, that little trickle beyond. We're not, we're not taking the fence over to the property line at that location. In addition to that, along the entire westerly property line, the property line that lets the residents in Holly Court, as was requested last month, we're also proposing to put a solid six-foot high final board fence along that entire property line. This fence would be located to the west of the existing trees that are out there. As we've always represented, we want to preserve those existing trees. They're, they have specific growth at the top, provide screening up the upper portion. So those trees would remain. The other item was, there was a request that we take a look at a way to increase visitor parking on this property. As Patton mentioned, we have five areas with blocks of two spaces in each. Or you can, or whoever's doing.
Sorry.
I do it. So when you first come in the driveway on the rainy inside, that's where your first two big spaces are. Those are two parallel spaces. If we continue around the circle to the westerly side in front of those two buildings, we'll be in two parallel spaces. If I continue down to the south to that area, there used to be a circle turnaround. We revised that. We put two perpendicular spaces. And then continuing back towards Berlin Turnpike on that south, that north side of the roadway, we have two more parallel spaces. And then before we exit, we have another two parallel spaces. These spaces, what we actually are proposing to do is construct them out of what we call Turstone. Turstone is concrete grid paper, which you can plant up the top soil and you can actually plant grass. This is detailed on the state sheet number eight of the plan set. Just flip over. Otherwise I could pull up my board. Okay. So in the bottom reading, the order of the detail sheet, this is an example of what a Turstone product looks like. Again, what it is, it's a, it's a concrete grid paper. It's, has a base on the, so it's adequate to support a vehicle parked on top of it, but also allows the opportunity to have grass growing up through it. So allow ground water filtration rather than having additional paper area. So those additional parking spaces would be constructed out of this. They are pitched in a manner so they do drain back toward the main room site. Coming obviously will go back to the drainage, as we described before. The other thing you asked, if you will, I think it's the last page. There's a question about how we handle snow management on this particular project. The way, the way I was always perceived in this project is it's, the roadway setup is similar to a roadway in a regular residential subdivision within the neutral driveways. So when someone's plowing, they would go around the perimeter. There would be six-foot width of area to create a snowbank around the entire perimeter of the road system along the edges of the driveway. Based on some calculations, if we ran for snow loads, there should be adequate area to be able to pile snow for typical storm events. Obviously, just like in town roads, there's a fact where there's too much snow. We had your site, but this plan and all the cross-staff areas around the perimeter are where the snowbanks could go. So there is this very special area to put snow. The final item, if you can go back one more page. There was also a request that we take a look at adding to additional landscape along the back of the units on the left side. In my experience, so number one, we did, but in my experience, I think that is going to be led better to plant snow globe, growing shrubbery. What we have is clusters of six of green tree, our righty. And it also wrote that, the green circles are the hardwoody. And that the, the black circles would be the clusters or wrote that. I pulled them out from the tree line because I've always had bad experiences trying to plant trees under an existing canopy. But I wanted to offer some kind of softening because on the lower side, the, the existing vegetation is a little bit sparse. So between the fence and the additional plantings, I hope this will help fill it, so the sparse areas. And offer an enhancement on the back of those units also. So that's what we have, basically from our review of last meeting and from comments that we received from Maureen. With that, I'll let you answer any questions the commission may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just before we go into public hearing, yes, Sally, you have a question?
I mean, is this the right kind of answer?
If you ask a question. Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Just a quick question. I think I heard you briefly mention that there's snow came down and amounts higher beyond which would just have to be removed from that.
If we ever get a bad word, if it's a major blizzard, you get two, over two feet of snow.
Two feet, okay.
It's a way. Formula basically is that when you get snowstorm, you can pile it. It all depends upon the fact, it's not, but your snow is compact as well, which is not the best part. But normally what we do, if we look at is if we get a snowstorm at about 24 inches, and then you go and pile it, it actually compacts down to about one fifth. So it's not taking even as much of an area. Once you get that major blizzard, we, you know, run out of room. So here's what happens in town roads, where you have two options.
Follow-up question. For the home sites of 15 and 14, where the parking was kind of put across the street from the driveways, it, it looks small and hard, hard for me to tell space. Is it easy for those to home location to back out into the street to make the turn?
So they actually, from the base of the garage to the other parking space, in total, is 42 feet. If you think you have your typical parking lot, your typical parking space is 18 feet. And your drive aisle is 24, it's all 42. So it's similar to try to back out of a parking space. They would be able to back out, make a cave maneuver, and pull straight out, so appropriately, with the spaces there.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else before we go to the public? All right. This is.
What is the block coverage here?
Or previous coverage? So for building coverage, we're supposed to be at 17.6 regulations, a lot of 50%.
Well, what about the, the?
If you love a quick map. It's about forty-three percent.
And that's including developments and.
The links to driveways. Quite honestly, we did our initial presentation on the board's receiving. But we showed you what was actually on the property for previous coverage. So it was originally developed. Compared to this, it was almost. Okay.
I have something. Sure, Ms. Miller. I wasn't at the initial meeting that we had in September. But I did watch the video and it was suggested that somebody was concerned about the area with, with community and that would bring it all together. And then I drove by the property and that's, that's not a real big piece of property to put eighteen units on. I, I was thinking, this is just my thought, that for to bring into a little community type feeling, that centerpiece where you have the two units would be ideal to put some type of a gazebo and that would even give you some more area for maybe additional parking or something and not put it right across to somebody else's house. But I just think it would look more like a community type thing and a feeling for the people there. If that centerpiece was had a gazebo and some type of garden area, maybe a plural garden and maybe a couple of parking spaces too over there.
So, you know, again, this is, I'll talk about that still, I'll have, you know, talk a little bit more about that works. Why, because it needs to stay with the statement of the case.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your last statement was, so we can explain why you stated the same amount of units?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Stone.
Well, as you just mentioned, I was trying to say at the beginning, although in, in a small community, I do understand it's a smaller area, but sometimes people do enjoy the close proximity to, to watching around, being able to see their neighbor, which is why we did the front porches, et cetera. And, you know, to be honest, some of those things that we do, that do all the infrastructure and to make sure that roads, roadways in the drainage, the landscaping, the fences, it all comes down to a fixed cost. If you start losing units, the product does not become as viable, we'll say. And I also think it determines if you have just everyone on the outside, you know, people are walking. But I think those, those units are nice for community people to enjoy their neighbors. But I understand your concern. I, I, I do get it. I just, I've walked around a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of developments. I've, sometimes people are so spread apart, they never see their neighbors.
These just seem to be on top of each other. That's a small parcel.
And then that they are rent leasing, I do agree that there's also you go up the street to Edgewater, very similar intensity there when I did write. So I do have another complex in Berlin as well, very similar land area in St. Anthony's.
Yes, so Commissioner. So is there a, I, I notice you remind people where you're living in these rooms and minutes. And if you're having additional to falls, sort of like a visitor right there staying outside, you know, looking pretty crowded with the, with the parking and the.
I think, I don't.
I, I think that's, there's an odd, I think, Mr. Stone, no, that's not you. I think that's Mr. Sigma. He's muted, so.
It may be his connection, and I am just going to remind everybody, I think, if I know correctly or understand how that's, yes, it's laugh. I think Chairwoman Bailey's speaker is always on. Check that yours are lit. If they're lit, then your microphone is working and we just have to make sure they're close because some of them.
Oh, oh, I guess. Maybe you know what, stop that. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you get one, one that I can't.
Oh, don't switch it off, because we can.
Don't, don't, don't switch out, just pull it over. Yeah, either that or I have an extra one here and I can give Brian this and Brian can give Andrew a hundred. Do you want to do that instead?
No, I can grab that one.
Yes, can you get the other one, I'll start putting with me.
Yeah, I could do it. All right.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm sorry about this technical difficulty. This happens the best of times. All right.
So I think your question was, is there a number of units, a number of people that you could limit to the units?
Right, like crowding, too many people per unit may be causing too many parking issues and, and everything.
What I can say from my experience, I don't know if there's a town ordinance where there's a number of people who can live there or can't live there, and that's kind of hard to enforce. I know from a landlord side, I wouldn't grant to more than two people, adults or relatives, but that's not to say they can't have a child or someone's to live with them. And it's not a pleasurable thing, but we do have, I don't know if you were at the first position, those all have garages plus the driveway plus our parking. So each unit, being a two-bedroom, has a garage and a driveway. And again, my experience in Berlin with my other project is typically we have one person or two, potentially two adults, that very rarely is there a three.
Well, anyway, you kind of answered your question because you stated that there are two-bedroom.
There are two bedrooms.
They're all two-bedroom units, so. They have a single parent with two kids or whatever.
Right, but I was trying to answer, I, there's no way to, I can't say that there'll only be three people that, that there. I don't think that's possible, as far as I know.
Yeah, I think you have to just judge it by the bedroom or potential.
Right.
Bedroom sort of, okay, just because now I have to do some housekeeping because Commissioner Sigma has joined us. So, um, is it, I guess that it would be appropriate for me to have him seated, which is, is said, and I would then ask Commissioner Zbickowski if you'd mind being alternate. Okay, all right, so Tim, we just acknowledged you as joining the meeting at seven forty and participating in this, and obviously you have a background with this application, which is great as well. And we could see we have a full complement here as well. Anyway, before I go back to the commission for questions, I really want to open this up to the public because I know they've been sitting here patiently. They probably want to address the commission. So if you aren't here with us and you'd like to address the commission, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and then share your comments, your thoughts, because you obviously live in the neighborhood, you're part of that neighborhood, and your feedback is very important to this commission. So if anyone would like to take the time in person to address the commission, okay, we, we can have a paper.
Recognize my, can you say, sure?
Well, several of you, I know, but, you know, we thank you for coming and just, and wanted to hear your remarks.
I'm Linda Allstrand, three, Holly Court. And I've been up here before talking and talking. One thing I want to do differently tonight is, this is. This is pretty general C seven. That's what they have right here. Yeah, there's a few mistakes on this thing, I hardly believe. But here they are. These are the erosion control notes.
Okay, I just.
And I've got, I have a sheet from the phone still and I'm downloading for you.
I also want to invite the commission, if they have the plans, now's a good time to sort of. So we can follow along.
C seven. Erosion control notes. Under the construction schedule, the anticipated starting date for construction is in twenty twenty, completion anticipated spring twenty twenty-one. It's almost two years. That's pretty minor, but the other ones I cannot believe are. The next one is under construction sequence, number two, contact town of Rocky Hill agent. Number three, approved by the town of Rocky Hill agent. And number twenty-one, upon direction of the town of Rocky Hill agent, that's the first column. The second column, down at the bow. Number eight, one fifty dividend road LLC is the committee responsible for implementing this plan. That's a, that's an apartment, those are apartments in Rocky Hill somewhere. The last column, number two, again, one fifty dividend road is the committee responsible for implementing this plan. And. Let's see. Also, number three talks about Rocky Hill again. Directed by the town of Rocky Hill. And then number twenty-seven, town of Rocky Hill zoning enforcement staff. And I did miss one other in the middle, also part of number eight, notification of the Rocky Hill Wetlands Enforcement Officer. So this is the same sheet that was part of the original application last year. So this, they didn't say changes, so it's now a part of this year. This is basically, well, nobody apparently looks at this stuff. So it's absolutely amazing to me that nobody did. And by nobody, I mean the developer, this engineering firm, the Berlin Planning and Zoning Staff and the Commission, the Public Works and Engineering Staff, and the inland wetlands commission. So what other mistakes could there be that, you know, I, again, I'm not, I'm no professional in this field at all, so I don't know, but it's an erosion and control narrative. Many very avoidable mistakes. What other mistakes are there? Not to have a town of rural into which we pay our tax to scrutinize the site plan. It's really demoralizing. And I'm, I, we strongly request, and based on this, this stuff should be, it's a different town, a different property. We are requesting that this application be tabled right now.
Well, we do give a compelling argument, but I do have a question for the app. Are these the latest, these plans that you submitted to us? Are these your latest plans? Or were there other plans that we did not receive?
So, so again, I, again, my miscommunication, my fault. First of all, I apologize. Obviously someone did a copy and paste of the page did not fill in the direct information, you know, data towns, if that's what's going on there. I can go through it. The date, we did start this project well over two years ago. So the date is not updated with, with plans, we, we, do we actually get approval against the two years with the process at this point, so we have to update. With respect to the updated plans, again, I was waiting, I thought I was waiting for comments from the town before the plans are updated. Apparently, this was outstanding, we read, she was waiting for me, we just updated. So they are all updated. I will go back to the sheet to make sure it's correct also. Obviously someone in my office made a copy and paste there, so the, it's been recorded, it's.
All right, I need a quick, yeah, just further this one. We do regularly, and I believe it comes from the cut and paste that happens now when engineering firms make digital, you know, they're making digital plans. Back when we had to write in all those comments when we were drawing plans annually, the, or physically pasting them on and rerunning a mile or a sheet to cut and paste, if the state did happen and cut and paste as often, we find, I find it on plans on a daily basis that the, the town is wrong, that those, those are details that aren't the substance. So we do catch them at some point, but it's, it's not the focus of what we're looking at. We're looking at, do they have the detail that knows how the soil, the, the fencing goes again, you know, the content, and then that's like that correction at the bottom of the page. We got to fix that, but we, every, a lot of plans that come through our offices, that happens, it's frequent. And I guess we all, as we get a bigger team, we'll be able to catch all those earlier in the process. But we get caught throughout, and again, that's our prop, our fault as well. As she stated, all our departments, reading them, you're scanning up the standard notes that are set. You know, there, because most of the sheet is standard notes, I believe, if I remember that sheet correctly.
All right, so, so we have a cut and paste that's wrong and we don't have an updated plan. And obviously, if we don't have an updated plan, then we, our planner has not had a chance to review it. Okay, so that being said, I, I realize it's tough to bring a project to a public hearing, but I also have to do due diligence and think about this commission and think about our, our job. So I would entertain a motion at this point. And I, because I'm at public hearing, we may have to close the public hearing, but I think that perhaps we should just deny without prejudice until we can get all the ducks in a row. And I don't know, is, if that's something that the commission would entertain. And, you know, so I, I, just because moving forward now, I'm not sure what else may be. All right. Mr. Stone.
Yes, Commissioner, I, I would, since this comes to, come to our attention, could we just continue this? Because if we deny, there's some regulations that would not let us.
I don't know.
So a request, if you, you want to get all of the plans and everything corrected, if you just extend.
I have, I have your money. Can you go ahead?
I'm sorry, excuse me, there must be somebody on the line in Zoom who has their microphone on, so please. We're getting some feedback here, so, okay, thank you. Tim, I saw you waving your hand online. Did you want to comment on anything? Tim, here he goes.
No, I, I think I agreed right now to close, close the meeting without prejudice until everything gets back in line.
And did you hear, did you also hear the comment by Mr. Snow that he was afraid that if, if we deny without prejudice versus continuing with public hearing, then his application may not have the window of opportunity that he needs.
Okay, I have to ask Maureen what the.
Reach our town attorney.
Now, now, okay, my comment on that is that there is extension time. And I'm going to check if we have to, if the commission has to accept their request to use, utilize that time. Or not, I, I don't know who the. It's, I know that the applicant is in control of extension time, closing the public hearing, I believe you're in control of. So which, which one trumps the other? And the other item is, and this is a reminder, maybe not all the commissioner members are aware at this point that we're under the moratorium for applications. So they would not be able to resubmit the application until that moratorium.
And we did that moratorium because you were overwhelmed and have no staff, professional staff working with you, which is how things can slide through the cracks. Okay, so thank God for the moratorium. But if, you may want to just call Jennifer, as opposed to. No, just step out, call her, make it in the hallway perhaps. And. Call Reese. Oh, recess, I think that would be a good idea. Let's call for recess. And I think all of you would understand why we're doing this. Go ahead, Mr. Rogan.
I'll make the motion to go to recess for, I think.
Yeah, I think, not sooner. It's seven fifty-two, we have a motion by Mr. Rogan to recess. I'll second that. We have a second by Mr. George, for the discussion, all those in favor, aye, as opposed.
Aye.
Aye, all thanks to the group. All right, so. All right, so we're going to take 10 minutes, if you want to stretch your legs or whatever. I don't know, I guess, maybe just a few more, I don't know. I would leave the eye. The time is 8:04, and I'm going to call the meeting back to recess. Let's move with everyone. All right. Yes.
I know we want to all get out, I spent a lot of time on this project, a lot of capital, a lot of money. I've worked with the neighbors and tried to make this proposal, that's, that's any of a while, every negotiation or every solution to something is always good if no one is happy. And I'm not happy, they're not happy, but everyone's totally getting this done, and I'd like to ask the commission to floor the admission, let me just get the two weeks. We'll come back with the correction of the plan, make sure the engineer reviews them to, to hold me out, and in the current situation, we can't come back. Because my engineer made a couple of mistakes on the plan, doesn't seem fair and applicable for what we're trying to do, to accomplish, trying to make.
And I think that, you know, I would, I would tend to agree with you, I think probably the best thing to do is, because you are offering to do the extension. I would just put the caveat on that you would need to have the corrected plans, completed corrected plans, at, at least a week out for our staff to review. So, I'm hoping that that's not going to be a problem, because I.
If he has to stay, and either keep in the office, I'll make sure.
Because if we do need at least a full week to, to, to be diligent, so. And I guess I would actually just need a vote from the commission of motion.
Sure, that's one other thing, if, if our neighbors have anything else that's in the plans, if they want to share with us now, that would be great. Just to give them two minutes, if there's something else that they see, or just not do it, it's fine, too, I would still make that offer, if you want to.
I'll say that to you. Commission, I'll, I'll just ask the commission, do you want to hear further testimony from the neighbors at this point? Okay, you're good, everyone's good? Okay, are there any other neighbors or any other folks that want to address the commission regarding this application tonight? I'm hoping that you understood what is happening here, nothing will be decided tonight, this will be continued, we're going out two weeks with it. They have promised to give us the plans in advance to our staff, so that we can do due diligence with our review. And this way, we're just sort of being fair to all, but if there's any comments that you'd like to make at this point, we will hear them. And they will continue on to the next meeting as well. Anyone else, yes, sir?
Hey, I'm Jonathan, I'm just looking at the south edge of the proposed development.
Yes.
After reviewing the plans this morning, I was looking at those, and he's still 17 feet off my property. I'd like to go 25 feet on those three proposed buildings, for some reason, say if I want to, in the future, with addition on or, or something. Up far, mine gonna have to be away from his residential property. It's first going to be residential, that's my concerns.
That's a valid, that's a valid question. I'm sure they'll take that into consideration, anyone else? Is there anyone on, on Zoom that has any questions?
Well, we have opportunity to speak in two weeks when we re.
Absolutely, if you're continuing.
All right, that makes sense, that makes good sense.
Yeah, all right, terrific. So.
Can we just add, I know we said it quickly, but can the applicant just say he acknowledges it requires use of extension time? And that's what he's requesting, the use of his extension time.
Patrick's Home Little House Living, so I request the use of my extension time to close this meeting out for two weeks, and keep the volume here open, is that convenient?
Yeah, that's convenient, thank you.
All right.
Which is when this will happen?
The October 20th.
I made a motion to continue, all right, motion to continue by Ms. George, we have a second, second. Okay, for the discussion. Okay. Trying to find all my notes, another Mr. Rogan is chomping at the bit to get going, sorry about this. Up next for, the next item is B, it's a zone change request of 550, dash 554, Berlin Turnpike Associates. LLC to change the zone, 502, Berlin Turnpike, map 10 dash 2, block 83, lot 13B. 522, Berlin Turnpike, map 10-2, block 83, lot 13, 534, Berlin Turnpike, map 10-2, block 83. Lot 14, from Berlin Turnpike BT1 to Berlin Turnpike Development, which is also known as the BTD Zone. Okay. So. I know Maureen is. Yeah, instructing, okay, I just ran off the call for B, which is the site plant, I mean, is special. Zone change. So I. Okay.
That's a good place.
Yeah, but we're just going to keep them separate, just to keep it clean, I think, you know. Anyway, all right, so let's do the zone change request first.
Okay, I, last time we did the call, thank you, Heather. Sorry, I prepared a session.
Oh, you're ready to come up with a base on it?
Leasing in, so.
All right.
Beat myself.
Okay, all right, well, we don't want you to. Okay, all right, so he, he's requesting combining item B and C. May I ask a question, just as a point of clarification? If this unchanged request is affecting the site application, site plan application. Does the timing of the zone change?
The assumption is that we're, we're going to vote on both items at the same time. So the statutory timelines for each falls under. I put my speaker on while I was talking, sorry, so the statutory timeline runs with each separately. So you have. So you have, it is a special permit use, so they're both public hearing items, both the zone change and the special permit. So therefore you have sixty-five days to open the public hearing, really, that's the date you're starting today. Thirty-five days to close each of the hearing. That you're combining or not, and then sixty-five days to decide. You could, you know, combine for the purposes of testimony, you're not combining for the purposes of decision, you're only making separate decisions. And those have to be separate actions, you have to make a decision on the zone change prior to making a decision on the site plan and special permit. You can make that decision five minutes ahead before it or any time before you've run out of statutory time.
All right, thank you. So we have a request by the applicant to combine for the purpose of the presentation and its fluidness.
Yes.
Yeah, testimony, okay. So do we have a motion for just the presentation to combine items B and C?
Would it combine B and C?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jarsey, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller, for the discussion, all was a favor.
Aye.
Tim? I know he's there.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Tim. All right, so we'll, go ahead.
Thank you, and I recognize that all three applications have to be acted on separately.
All right. It's been a very confusing evening.
I'll simplify. I don't want to make any more complex.
Please don't.
Attorney Tim Sullivan on behalf of the applicant, five fifty to five fifty-four, borough and turnpike associates LLC. I refer to my client as VTA, for words, simply. No work of death. Also in attendance is Bart Malve, the engineer, part where we review the combining of the properties, the zone change and a master plan. Mark Virtucci is here today in person as well, he did the traffic study. We have Brian Miller who's here virtually, he's online, I say. We have Jeff Jenke, Brian Miller will be providing testimony on the housing affordability plan. And Jeff Jenke will be giving us testimony on the architectural plans. BTL is property on the west side of the borough and turnpike, just north of Woodlong Road. I can refer to the print that Bart has put up. Five oh two, five twenty-two, and five fifty-four, borough and turnpike runs along the westerly side of the borough and turnpike. And it's just north of Woodlong Road. An easy way to look at it would be the ABC Supply Company that's six thousand and a little hole off the borough and turnpike, if you were looking at borough and turnpike associates. Five oh two would be north, and five twenty-two would be sort of a rear lot, but it's got enough frontage that that five fifty-four would be the ABC Supply Company. Some other points of reference, the town water tank is back there, and there at EverSource has some transmission lines that run up, that run along the southern border of the property. I just for a point of reference, we have finalized our permanent agreement with EverSource in regard to their redesign. There is a significant elevation, elevation change from the borough and turnpike towards the Madabassett River. So like I said, the property sits in a hall with public utilities as a boundary. Despite, despite these challenges, my client and Bart and the commission, including its consultants, have designed an attractive mixed-use development along the corridor of the borough and turnpike. That the plan of conservation and development is identified as a housing corridor. I referenced the commission and its consultants as contributing to the, to the design. And that's because, well, it's the third, we would just open the public hearing on this project, this project has been before the commission before. Back in, actually, one year ago, October seventh, it was, the application was submitted for various reasons, we ran out of time in the spring and we withdrew that application. But all of the input that the commission and its consultants provided for us in that first application has been put into this proposal. More on that later in terms of changes. The three lots that comprise the master plan aggregate to approximately twenty-one acres. Five oh two is two acres, five fifty-four is the ABC property, which is six point four seven acres. And five twenty-two, as I stated, is the, I guess, the housing proposal, behind ABC Supply, that's twelve point six one acres. Bart will be providing details of the proposal and the history, previous site plan in the wetlands pool, et cetera. The proposed project is a type of a mixed-use development contemplated by the plan of concert, by the planning and zoning commission, when it adopted the borough and turnpike development zone, BTD zone. All three parcels are currently zoned BT one and seek to develop the parcels under the BTD overlay zone. This requires the zone change application, the site plan application, and the special permit application. The applications necessary for the project are the same as the applications that were necessary for the BT two oh eight, two thousand eight project that this commission approved a little more than a year ago. Which would be same side of the road, west side of the borough and turnpike, but just north of this property. Really, the town pump station sort of divides the two properties, two parcels. The housing proposal is for a hundred and six units in three buildings and includes an affordable housing set aside. Brian Miller will be addressing this in his report. The next presenter will be Mark Virtucci, who I stated is here to address the traffic study. And the final presenter is Jeff Jenke to review the architectural plans. As I indicated earlier, the commission and its consultants commented on this proposal, my client listened. During, during the public hearing for application number one. Some of the changes that we've made, the number of two-bedroom units was reduced to twenty-two, and the number of one-bedroom units was increased to eighty-four. Rotary was added to the traffic flow on the west side of the property in front of the residential buildings. That was in response to the engineering consultant WMC's comment number nine. The dog run was relocated, the community center was slightly relocated. Landscaping was enhanced between ABC and the residential projects, the residential project. Parking was reduced to a hundred and eighty-eight spaces for the residential, and the road did not exceed fifteen spaces. Four new spaces were added near building number two, seven new spaces were added near the southeast area of the rotary. Snow storage options were enhanced, two landscape islands were added in front of buildings one and two. Sidewalk access to the dumpster in building three was added, the community center, the, it was added a community room. Some of these were added prior to the withdrawal of the last application, like the last few I'm talking about. We have trail access now with exercise stations. We have lighting and sidewalk, ornamental lighting and a lot of sidewalks to and from the property. We have an acceleration and deceleration lane with a bus stop, and we relocated the entrance and exit from the, from the property. Two very, very significant changes, some were made, like I said before the withdrawal of the last application, some were made in between the two applications, but both with the. In consultation with the commission and with the consultants hired by the commission. At this time, I'm gonna defer to Bart to talk about some of the specifics of the project, especially the changes that have been made since the last time we were here. Thanks.
Thank you, Attorney. Hi Bart, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Good.
Bart Malve, Angie Cole, and son, I'm Mr. Apple. Tim did a good job, kind of give you all of your, give you a little point detail. As you mentioned, there's three sites in this project. The upper portion here is a site that was originally approved in two thousand and eighteen as a car repair facility, we're now proposing this as a. A convenience store that contains seventeen parking spaces. It would be fed off a common driveway that would be constructed that would serve both the ABC Tool Company, express time ABC Tool, that's kind of why the coming off the borough and turnpike, we're gonna combine all those driveway locations that went common entrance. In their parking area, we've replicated parking, they had thirty-five spaces approximately before we plan on putting another thirty-five space back in and reconstructing it. Those two buildings, the building in the front and the warehouse storage building in back, about six thousand four hundred and two square feet, they've got a storage yard in between. The driveway kind of works itself down around the side, a lot of truck access into the yard and then access back into the parking area. This is, you would say for the bringing a common driveway through there, just the parking lot, feeding it through, by creating a separate driveway, segregating the traffic. So we're not creating any bottlenecks by car wreck backing out as part of the ABC Tool. The driveway would then extend back into the residential component of the project, which is known as five twenty-two borough and turnpike. Was a hundred and six residential units in three buildings. The first building is part of some of the comments from commission was switched between the first and second building, the first building is three stories, building two is four stories. And building three is four stories, twenty-eight units, thirty-nine, thirty-nine units. There is a community room that's located adjacent to the area, we put some extra parking along that side, so people decided to, if they don't want to walk, they can come over here. And we've taken a dog walk here, we had a dog walk here, it tucked in the side. And part of the engineering consultant's comments was it should remove the wetlands, so we moved it up to the outside area here. That's kind of an overviewable proposal. The first part of this project was to deal with our wetlands issues, and we went through wetlands, a little long drawn out process, but we have our approval. And the biggest problem with wetlands is we're not impacting directly wetland, but we are able to some of the upland review areas. But the biggest area was the floodway, sorry. The Madabassett River runs through the site, you can kind of see it here, we should see it through, comes up to the turnpike. This prone flooding, I think the last flooding out of the turnpike was probably in the nineteen eighties, where this backed up. What's happened is without any activity on that, a lot of that area around that used to be open floodplains has grown up in the tree and become basically a trash rack. This area up in here was prone not to floodway, but flood fringe story, so what we're doing is looking to raise that road up to get it out of the floodway. And then this letting green area here, we're posing an area of mitigation. The compensator flood storage will compensate for both the upper storm, but more importantly, the smaller two or five storms. So right flood storage is a presently available, that will technically revert back into wetlands type configuration. But we're not counting that as part of our wetlands mitigation, we just set aside mitigation plants as part of this and bad down planting schedules. So this whole area will now become out of the floodway, this will become high and dry during major floods, the flood will sink fine to the, into the river. And then that will lead us back into an existing driveway that expanded into our parking lot. Just to mention, we did a lot of work with the consultant trip for us, they were concerned about the amount of consecutive parking spaces now, we shrunk that down, so now we have no more than fifteen feet. We provided immediate islands without landscaping, so that's an area for snow storage that we didn't have originally. They were concerned about an extra dumpster location, originally a dumpster location on both sides, as I said, we've added a double dumpster located in the middle, so that shouldn't leave a. Residential building two making the decision whether to go north or south of the dumpsters. We've kind of created a exterior high street trail path that works around the outside site, we put exercise stations along that path, so there's extra recreational amenities. And we've also added additional sidewalks, so people can walk through this area. So basically they can make a loop, it's about a four mile loop. I know the town has had a study regarding potential for development of the. Of the, the open space land they have around the outside, right, trails and stuff, we are immutable and agreeable with making those connections, we've shown two connection potential. Within that area, and in the event the town has any ideas about maybe parking, you have a residence come parking, we've added parking to our site. So that we have not, not to bear bones, took a little bit of parking, if you look at the old regulations, the two spaces per unit, we'd require two hundred and twenty-five spaces for the residential. As part of the consultant's report, it was kind of agreed that if we went to a space and a half per single family unit and wanted three-quarter spaces for, to a family, we could be as low as a hundred and seventy-three. And I think the government and directorate kind of agrees with that, but we are proposing eight spaces, so those extra seven spaces would be available, so in case town ever develops. The, the site around the outside, it needs a place for public parking projects, so we could, they can jump off the I controls that we have, I make it now. There is to mention CLMP, EverSource, whatever they call it, I think, runs through this area, as to mention, we could get our approvals from EverSource, provide the activity within their land. Most of the activity is parking and the rotary, they've got high tension fire lines here, and up here, so we're kind of in the middle of that. You know, with regard to the front parking, we have removed some of the parking that was located on the outside of the site. The rotary now comes to play, in this location before we had a through road that came through building three, that forced the drivers that didn't find a parking space, the buildings didn't have to negotiate. Through the parking lots in front of building three, this rotary then allows it to make a quick return, and then if they see a space that they didn't like the first time, if you like the second time, it was a, they go back and not have to negotiate with, with the area. Totally, we've got two hundred and thirty-three spaces on the entire site. Other amenities we've provided for is with the service of sidewalks, we've extended our sidewalk down, and we've made provisions for a bus stop on the borough and turnpike, that's something the DOT will much focus as part of their, their final review. But we've, we've made that allowance, in some case they want to have an area for pull off our bus in this area, because we feel that's a nice amenity for the residents and also for workers and facilities. That they have the ability to, to use bus transportation, there was a bus that runs down the turnpike, and with that, we wouldn't have to change any of the system around. Just touching base here, filling wetlands, we did get our wetlands activity, there was some fringe work within the wetlands. All that stuff was approved by the wetlands commission, we did do mitigation again up in that area, we also did some mitigation up in this area with this building and the path system that goes through there. Another comment was the fence, the entire fencing originally, we only fenced the high side, but they requested a fence. We've enhanced plantings along our side, besides street trees on the side, we could cooler raised buffer that would screen the residents using the parking lot from the storage area here. We've also added street trees here and then a landscape buffer up in this corner, so as people come through here, they're not gonna be focused on the parking lot, but that's one. And we think that's a plus to the site. I know last project, somebody was asking about appropriate surface, appropriate surface coverage on the residential performance, about one, one percent for building and about twenty-five percent for the overall site. That give you respect of this zone allows for eighty percent coverage, so we'll help with all that. And we've got a lot of empty areas which are, are available. Stormwater, we're trying to use existing crossings off of ABC Tool, making separate improvements on each one of these, adding water quality separators. So then instead of just the sediment dumping out to the brack, we can collect that, clean that up in that location. For the remainder of the site, the majority of the stormwater will run into a stormwater management area in the back. There is a present area of inundation, so when it basically flows heavily through that area, the water backs up and it's stored in the tridoor area. We're creating an outlet control structure in this location that will also flow through, and we're also passing some of the water that happens over in the Woodland Road area, passing it around to the site. So we're trying to make the site as, as clean as possible. Just go through, we did get comments from Gorman and York, Don Pooh, one I know is online.
Was online. Yeah, he still is.
And I'm sure he'll make those comments, we have not received anything from third-party engineering, WMD consulting engineer already on those comments, so. But we have to go by other fifty-something comments that they made for the original set of plans, and hopefully address most of those items as part of this plan. So hopefully we'll find a much shorter set of comments when they review those comments. Basically, I covered most of the stuff that won't control the intract. Basically, I covered most of the stuff that walk control, the traction pad we put in. Oh, the other thing is a couple of things, number one, they were interested in phasing, how we're going to phase this and tell us. And part of the package, there is a phasing plan, but generally, I could say the first part of the first phase is the construction of this medical machine. We can't do any filling within this area, build a road to mitigate the foot storage here, so the first thing we do is we would mitigate this area. Then the second phase would be to build the road up, so that we have access, we can access ABC tool. Once that driveway is constructed there, we would then close this opening up and allow vehicles to use the ABC tool. This site is kind of standalone, it kind of works on its own, it can be built in a proportion of the construction. But once this phase and this phase and this is allowed, then we could come into the backside. And obviously, we probably use the three-phase approach when we get back into the most side. So essentially, all the upfront work off the turnpike initially. We make sure ABC tool has proper access and then we can move to close those areas to build the rest of the site. Uh we've also had a signage plan, there is a question about signage, how we're going to sign this, uh there's a plan. But what I didn't mention is we've asked speed bumps, it's a pedestrian crossing along this way. So we put signage on each one of these crossings to indicate pedestrian crossing speed bumps. Uh pedestrian crossing rotary location, keep right, etc. So that's all part of the of the plan, we've enhanced the lighting, we've shown lighting standards, we've showed benches along the way. So the people walking back and forth have adequate areas to uh sit down and rest. We've also had CD areas between buildings one, two, and next building three, which include a uh. A barbecue area, barbecue grill areas, so people can have barbecues outside and not be forced to their rental units. Uh I think that's about it, we did, we went through the loading, I think we went through loading last year. Last time, but the pool uh looked at some of the stuff, we were concerned about the ability to access some of these uh units for uh. For loading, so we've dedicated a couple of spaces and had signage that's on the plan to indicate that. Those areas are reserved, avoided during the day to use for for parking, so uh. Would that say? Thank you. Brian Miller's still on, I believe.
He's still there.
Great, who has Brian Miller to comment on his housing affordability plan this time?
Good, good evening, I'm here, I'm going to share the page with the permission of the chair. Uh biscuit, the screen.
Okay, um we're in the process of doing that now for you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Well, he tries to share, it should work, if it doesn't, we'll have to change his sound, okay, so that he can't like the past. Brian, try to share now, because you should be all set, we just want to see if it's gonna work.
Okay, I think we're all, does everybody see it?
Yeah, we sure do, thank you.
Oh, wonderful, I'm in a hotel uh with this, so I'm not sure how everything's working, but. But anyway, um for record, Brian Miller, Miller Planning Group in Wyoming for Connecticut. Um I was requested to update the housing affordability plan that I prepared, I guess sometime last year. And uh then it need it needed to be updated because the data upon which the. Um decisions are made and the calculations are made are timely, and that they're updated. Either by the state or the federal government. Uh and. So uh that's the point of, that's why we needed to update it and, you know, make sure it fit the um. The parameters of this application and the most current information. As you know, um this plan, a lot of these calculations will be have to be updated on a um. Um on an annual basis as well, when those decisions are made. So um anyway, I um to clarify, instead of going through the the um book on this presentation, I've taken some. Uh these charts and uh add of the um. The the uh housing affordability plan that I um I think you all have. The the first one here is uh the phase construction. Again, we, it has to be phased in so that each unit, each phase of construction would have the right. Uh at least a minimum amount of affordable units, and the phasing, of course, was done by the uh building uh numbers, and which makes a whole lot of sense. Um then we have on page three, the the location, again, that was done on on by the buildings. So um each of the uh buildings is balanced, is is, you know, within a couple of decimal points. Of the uh each of them have the the distribution of the affordable units, uh both both ends of it, the sixty percent and the eighty percent. Um now we get down to, just this is the the median family income and what it was based. Um as of twenty twenty-two, it went up quite a bit since the twenty twenty-one. The interesting thing here is that you're supposed to take the lowest of either the state of Connecticut or the region. And uh this, the statistics show that actually, they're pretty much the same with only a hundred dollar annual difference, so. We did use the state um one on this one, one hundred and twelve thousand six hundred dollars, which was the basic for our. Determinations and calculations of each of the uh groups. Here we have the one bedroom rental, and that is on page nine. Um and uh again, we go through our calculations, I'm not going to go over it, it's not a math test here. But what what it found, the the calculations found that for the sixty percent, that that's the lowest unit. Um that the the with the um. Rent um making accommodations to also uh what the tenant costs for heat and electricity. That would be a nine hundred and twenty-four dollar a month rent, for that's that lowest of the of the um of the bunch there. For the one bedroom, the two bedroom, again, at the sixty percent, we have down here, you know, the the maximum monthly housing payment. Less than the five steps, and we're at the sixty percent is one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We go to this um. And and again, we do these calculations, this is for the one bedroom rental at the higher level. So uh that's twelve seventeen, I did put that wrong number down, I do apologize for that, but it's twelve seventeen. On that, and um. No, I'm sorry, it's, I I'm sorry, it's, again, I'm getting a little confused here, it's um eleven twenty-seven for the. Two-bedroom rental at sixty percent, so, and then again, we go back to the um. The the one bedroom at eighty percent, and it's one thousand eighty-seven dollars. And uh the two-bedroom at eighty percent is thirteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So that's that's our calculations, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, again, it is in your. Um the book that I, the report that I did prepare, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Miller? Oh, I I I have a question, uh Brian.
Yes.
When you, when you broke out the chart for sixty percent versus eighty percent, why did you do that? Why did we do that?
Because the your regulations and the state affordability regulations require two levels of affordability. One to the uh family that's uh making eighty percent of the median income, and that's adjusted for family size. And the other for um less uh fortunate people whose annual income is only sixty percent. So um the units will be uh rented to different levels of affordability. And the state decided to do this number of years ago because somebody felt that, or they felt that legislature felt that. It wasn't really helping the um Torah uh residents in the state. So that's why we have the two numbers, they're all like that, a a thirty G application in the state also must have that as well.
Okay, thank you, it's just that I I recognize that when this whole affordability thing came in. Uh the state had a benchmark range of percentage of uh income, but I never remember them restricting. A project and dictating uh to that project um at what level of affordability would be applied.
Now, that's that's been um with the, they they had the eighty percent, it started with the eighty percent in like nineteen ninety or something. And at some point in two thousand and three, or whatever, they added the sixty percent. But every eight thirty G affordable housing appeals application has that, and the ones I presented to you have it as well, so. Um and I think I I've done about four of them for you, but they're all, they're all basically, they have, they have to be the same, that's. You know, if you cop, you refer to your regulations refer to eight thirty G, which I think is a is a good idea. Um but that's the, you know, that's that's been around for a while, and uh, you know.
Okay, thank you for um explaining that, I just, it caught my attention.
My pleasure.
Okay, anyone else have?
Yeah, I just got a little quick question for Mr. Miller, this is pointing confusion for me, because we're also in the process of doing our P O C D. At one of the last meetings, we were talking about affordability at the state. And um it caught my attention, because I believe when we were talking with our consultant for the P O C D, that. The median income in the state of Connecticut was much lower than what you just presented. Um and I remember that because it caught my surprise when we were talking about it at that meeting. So I just want to make sure those numbers are correct, I'm not doubting you, but I'm just curious to where your sources for what median income is.
In my report, I actually sourced it with footnotes. Um that the Connecticut Department of Hou- of of Housing has all those statistics. Um and uh the median income is um. Yeah, from the Department of Housing, because they use, they, these these income limits are used. Um for uh by uh both the Connecticut State Department of Housing and HUD. As guidelines for how they um have their section eight programs and things like that, all their housing program. The the, I might also suggest that it has to be adjusted for for um. Family size, so the two-bedroomed units, they assume that there's going to be three people living in there. So they ta- they the they take it as ninety percent of that median income before, then they. Take the affordability factors off as well, and for one bedrooms, they assume one and a half people. I don't know what a half person is, but um that's the way they do it. And again, that goes down to uh, excuse me, that's two people, but yes, there is one with a half. But that goes down as well, so you see, we make those adjustments there, so. I don't know what, you know, the the those uh median incomes is is diff, there's median income, there's mean income. And i- it's adjusted by an estimate annually, so I I don't know what data you've seen, but um this is the. One that we should be basing it on, and it's the most up-to-date one that I I've I've noticed.
Okay, thank you, anything else, Brian?
Oh, go ahead, can, yes, I just commented on that, that um the data would. My understanding is, if I'm not an expert on the giving out the data as far as affordable housing. Um that we do send those documents to be reviewed by Corporation Council, but I believe they would be adjusted to the time. That like he's giving an example, there'd be adjusted to the data that comes out at the time that that unit rented.
That that's correct.
It's a fluid number, and it changes.
That's 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 absolutely correct, so, in fact, there's none of the units are going to be built according to these calculations anyway. Because they're not going to be built in twenty twenty-two, so it'll be updated, the income probably goes up, maybe it goes down. Um there's all, there's all these variables that have to be recalculated periodically.
Okay, all right, thank you, is there anyone else? Okay, um. Is that your presentation?
No, not quite, we got a couple more. For Tucci's going to come back on his traffic study that he prepared.
Okay.
Is here in Herschel.
Oh, all right, terrific, thank you, I didn't mean to skate over you.
That's all right. Uh good evening, Mark Virtucci, the senior transportation engineer at Fussin O'Neil in Manchester. Also registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer. Uh we did prepare the traffic study for the developments, so just briefly describe our findings and our methodology. Uh as Bart had mentioned, the uh, you know, the site's going to be accessed here by uh, we're a right-in, right-out driveway. Taking the existing driveway which has higher speed, right, higher speed out. Consolidating it into a more normalized uh safer intersection, but still a right-in, right-out. There'll be a second rated driveway uh that will access the uh the retail portion of the development, uh which for the purposes of our study, it's going to be a. A convenience store. Uh we also, um in addition to to reviewing those intersections, uh we looked at uh the intersections of the Berlin Turnpike at Fleming Road, one sixty. Uh we reviewed the Berlin Turnpike at the future four oh four Berlin Turnpike driveway, each hill development uh that got approved. And I believe it's under construction or beginning to be under construction now. Uh and we reviewed uh the Berlin Turnpike, the Woodlawn, where they bridge intersection as well. Uh we obtained traffic counts, two thousand nineteen counts from the Department of Transportation, they actually came from that. Each hills uh traffic study, uh they're pre-COVID counts, uh so they haven't been impacted by the fluctuations in traffic that have been happening the past few years. Uh the highest peak hours of the day were seven fifteen to eight fifteen in the morning, four to five o'clock in the afternoon, so those are the peak hours we analyzed, uh as part of our study. Uh we went ahead, we grew those traffic counts to the uh twenty twenty-four design year, expect this will be a big build or opening year of the development. We utilized a one and a half percent per year growth rate, uh that's recommended by the DOT. Uh as far as the traffic that this development will generate, uh we projected rates uh. Based on the industry standard rates provided in the I T E trip generation manual. Uh and we uh utilize the rates for, as I mentioned before, convenience store residential portion, we use the mid-rise multi-family housing. Land use code. I want to make a a point here that a lot of the traffic this resale development is going to generate, uh the retail portion. Uh is going to be pass-by trips, so if you get a use like a convenience store, a lot of the trips are just, they're drawn out of the existing traffic stream of the turnpike. Uh so existing traffic, it's not new trips we're generating on the road network, they they stop into the site on their way. Won't work or just continue on, so. Um so we took a fifty-one percent credit for that, uh which is pretty conservative, actually typically. A stores of higher pass-by rates than that. Um also, we took a credit for internal capture and for transit, and that was a ten percent credit there. The capture is to account for people who may, they may turn in, uh they may be a resident that lives here, and they use the convenience store on their way in, or vice versa. Or maybe somebody who works at the ABC and they stop the convenience store on their way out, uh there's no sense of double counting those trips, so. And the transit portion of that credit is, as Bart mentioned, we're providing a bus pull-off area, so. Uh we do think that some of the residents will use the bus service that uh exists on the turnpike. So when you factor all that in, uh this development uh is going to generate uh net new trips in morning peak hour, fifty entering trips and sixty-nine exiting. And in the afternoon peak hour, uh fifty-six entering and forty-eight exiting, we're we're projecting. Uh so we then took these uh these rates, and we performed a capacity analysis at each of our study intersections, we compared the. We compared the background conditions out the development traffic to the combined conditions. And adding in the developed traffic. And we rate each of these intersections at the analysis rates, a level of service scale or report card type scale for beta F. Uh, the analysis revealed there would be no uh changes or decreases in level of service at the Berlin Turnpike. Deming Road intersection, also no change in level of service at the Berlin Turnpike, uh, Woodlawn, Worthington Bridge intersection. Uh, we had a minor decrease in level of service at the future Beach Hill Development driveway, just went from A to B. Morning peak hour, which is still an efficient operation. The site driveway, our exit, uh, will be level service B in the morning peak hour, which is. Uh, pretty good operation. The afternoon peak hour, uh, it is, it does go down to an F, so that's the highest peak hour of the day. Um, but I want to point out again, it's just, it's that one peak hour during the afternoon computer peak. When you get that added delay coming out of the site. Delayed vehicles are stored on the site, we're not impacting uh traffic operations on the turnpike. And uh, that signal that's going in at the Beach Hill Development, uh, is actually going to, I think, help this this site. And that uh that signal, every time it changes, it's going to create gaps in traffic. Uh, you get that gap, it's going to help the people be able to to turn out of here during those highest uh traffic periods. Also wanted to note, uh, the D O T is in the process of replacing many of the signals along the turnpike. North of here, it's a state project replacing fifteen signals. I'm sure you've seen those. Very large fast arms going in uh up the road. The uh, that that project will uh create safer, more efficient traffic flow of the down the turnpike. Should help traffic accessing the site in future. He did look, from a safety perspective, we reviewed sightlines from the driveway, uh, sightlines. Were measured to exceed D O T criteria for safe egress. We also looked at crash data, the latest three years available data from the Yukon Crash Repository was reviewed. And we did not find any abnormal crash patterns, uh, anything abnormal for a signalized arterial such as the. Berlin Turnpike. And most importantly, there were no crashes reported coming out of the existing A B C uh driveway. Uh, the recommendations of our study, uh, Tim and Bart had had hit on already, but we are recommending again that bus pull-off. To help encourage transit usage at the site, and there will be a walkway that goes from that pull-off down into the residential portion of the property. We're also proposing uh that the shoulders on uh turnpike southbound be widened. To provide a deceleration or slowdown lane and a short acceleration lane. Uh, which should help uh traffic entering and exiting, uh, exit, enter and exit the site more safely. Uh, this does need to be reviewed by the D O T, this is obviously all under their jurisdiction. Uh, we do need a state traffic administration review, that application uh is going in shortly. Uh, so they will have a thoroughly be reviewing this. We're also going to need an approach of permit from the D O T District One Office. So that office will also get a crack at reviewing this as well. Uh, so that should hopefully give you a level of comfort that this traffic access uh and these improvements will. You know, will be looked at thoroughly by the by the state. Um, so with that, um, just to conclude the findings of our study, uh, this proposed residential and retail development. On implementation of these improvements I just described will not have a significant impact to traffic operations on the adjacent road network. And the site traffic uh will be safely, efficiently accommodated on the turnpike. Um, I can take any questions now, or we can wait till the end. We have one more presenter, uh, architecture.
Um, does anyone have any questions at this point for traffic study? All right, so let's go on to the next presenter. Because we'll all be back. We're all going to come back.
Sure.
Just for point of clarification. But um, when Mark was referring to Beach Hill Associates.
Yeah.
Those are the previous owners. Now, when they DT two thousand eight, that's similar, but a larger development. Just south of this, on the west side of the brown term, like I referred to in my opening remarks.
It's south of you or what?
No, I'm sorry, north, I'm sorry.
Is that a damage?
That's true, yes, exactly. So when he was referring to Beach Hill, that new traffic signal, that's where you first.
Yeah, I I figured that. I was also, and I understood that, that that's what it was, but no, that's what you. Thank you for clarifying.
And we just talked like Mr. Janki, who was also, uh, who was the architect about the project.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Janki?
There we go. Sorry about that. Uh, I was having a problem unmuting. Apologies for not being able to be there in person. Uh, for the record, this is Jeff Yonkey from Yonkey Architecture in Hartford. Uh, we are the architects who uh prepared uh the design for this proposal. Um, I I'm just going to run through a couple of things quickly in the interest of brevity. Um, so I'm not going to ask to share my screen uh at this point in time. Um, but what I will say is uh to just emphasize the changes that were made. Uh, after the meeting in October, uh, we made changes in March, uh, which uh the initial task was to. Uh, change the counts of the units, uh, which we did. Uh, so we're at eighty-four one-bedroom units total and twenty-two two-bedrooms with a grand total of a hundred and six units. Over uh three buildings. Two of the buildings, uh, buildings number two and building number three, uh, are four-story buildings. Uh, they're virtually identical. Uh, building number one is a three-story building. Um, that building also houses a uh model unit with a rental office. Um, and then we have a small community building, which is uh about twelve hundred square feet. Um, which houses a a small community room, a kitchenette. Two eighty-eight bathrooms and a storage closet. Um, very quickly, uh, we tried to make sure that uh every unit has its own balcony. Uh, on the floors uh above grade, uh, which they do. And then all the units on the uh ground floor have an opportunity for a patio. Um, the other change that we made was we uh adjusted relative to some comments on the site plan. Uh, I think we've switched building two with building one. Uh, and that was because there were some comments, uh, if I recall, that uh had uh suggested that. Uh, this approach on approach to the site. Um, relative to the visual impact of the height of the units would be better to have the three-story unit first, so uh we did that. Um, the only other thing I'll point out is um, we uh. Have tried to make some efforts to make each of the buildings somewhat unique. Uh, and that was primarily with the uh choice of finishes uh on those buildings. It's it's done mainly with colors, uh, with a a brick base that's about twelve feet, which could be. And I think in our renderings, we've indicated something that could be a white brick, something as a red brick and something as a gray brick. Uh, and then breaking it up between uh clavoured and shingle siding. Uh, proposed to be uh high-quality vinyl at this point, uh asphalt shingle roofs. Um, wood and or PVC trim on the building. Um, uh, and then uh the basis of design for the windows was a a Harvey uh window and a Harvey doors. Uh, and then we have three areas on each building that would have a storefront slash curtain wall system. And those are on the fire stairs, which you can see on the front elevations, which are on the uh, they flank. Or are on the left and right side of the uh main entrances uh into the buildings, which are also storefront. Uh, I'm going to put the pause button on there and ask if, you know. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer if not. I'll stick around till the end. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? We're trying to bring up the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I mean, I like to talk so much about it.
I guess I had a quick question. I'm I'm new to the board tonight, so please bear with me for what might be silly. But um, it sounds like there was a a recommendation to have so many. One-bedroom and so many two-bedroom. How does that come about? I mean, as far as.
It's in the regulations.
Oh, okay.
Most of the time you require one bedroom. But because of the nature of the number of units. Floors, four to ten, extra floor, allow to have two bedroom, a certain number, twenty percent.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else, or Tim, I know you're online, so Tim Ziegma, do you commissioners, Ziegma, do you have any questions at this point?
Uh, I'm questioning if the test was done about the electrical wires overhead. Uh, E F waves uh were tested or not, uh, the health uh concerns that I have about the wires.
Okay, um, the electrical wires, because it's a C L P right away. I guess they have the towers there with the wires that go through. Um, you know, that they had written articles and some publications came out saying that, you know. Closeness or proximity to those wires could be in some place times detrimental to your health. And was there any uh test done regarding uh anything that might be coming off of those wires that we should be aware of?
I'm unaware any tests ever done. Okay. Requested EverSource to relinquish any tests to us. I'm not sure they would.
Oh, okay.
We have not performed any tests. Uh, C L P has, EverSource has approved our permit request, allowing us to use area underneath uh these wires for for parking. Uh, there are no residential developments underneath the wires.
Okay. Tim, did you hear uh Mr. Attorney Sullivan's response?
Uh, yes, I did, I did, uh. Uh, but there is a test for that, uh, and the health concerns, and there is a. A level of uh waves coming down from those wires that should be addressed. Uh, I know C L P's saying okay to put the project there, uh, but I want to know if there is a health risk.
Yeah, I'm worried. I'm not sure who they would go to for that test, so maybe, you know, the other consultants who have had experience with that.
Yeah, I think I defer to the other consultants, but if I have to ask the health district as well, I can search that out.
Okay, terrific. So we'll do that on our end too. So I know this is all going to be continued.
There is, and I'll be in communication with.
Yeah.
If something needs to be done.
Yeah, uh, it's just a real quick question. What was the reason why we don't have a path uh exit onto Woodlawn Drive?
It it's not frontline Woodlawn Drive. It's on other property, this, um, the properties that front along Woodlawn Drive sit between.
And they're all commercial, they're all commercial as well.
These light industrial stuff.
Yeah, what there is, something goes out from. There's a car wash there, there's uh trys, they.
Material testing.
Material testing, that kind of whole name, and a couple of others. There is an access way for that um is not. Um, owned by the town, but the accesses, the town has access to get to the town lands that's there with the, where the water tank is. But again, that's not on this property, that's on the adjacent Woodlawn. Woodlawn property. We don't have Woodlawn open space.
And and then my other question.
Sportsman's time.
Oh, I had. The other quick question I had. Will we talk about A B C Industries? Are they part of this overall plan?
Yes, they are.
All right, so they're a participant too in this development.
Well, they own the property, we own the property. They're they're a, let's see, ours.
Okay, so are, is there any um movement or notion to include them in the design? I mean, are you going to update their building? Is is the owner of the property going to update the?
There's not, there's not call for it.
Okay, all right, I'm just, I I just, because we're going to be thinking about this and stuff moving forward, so I just want to see. If it was part of the proposal, because I, you know, as we talk about it, we mention it, mention it. So I I got a little confused, so I just wanted to clarify that. Although they're part of the project, they're not part of the project, so they're not a consideration.
They are a part of the project.
Yeah.
The project is not proposing upgrade to their current um facility.
So what it is, it is.
At this point, yes.
Okay.
We are proposing some modifications to the actual property. Um, but Bart can speak more about how much property is being, there's some boundary line provisions to be made.
Well.
Uh, there are some parking, there are some parking revisions being made, some curb cuts, sidewalks being added, things like that.
I just, you know, I I just, you know, as we move forward, and I don't mean to, you know, drive you a period at all. Because it's just, as I'm thinking through the process and as I'm thinking about the project itself. Um, before we go into an in-depth review. I know this is your moment for your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to have those things straight in my little brain. All right, thank you.
That pretty much concludes our presentation today. Um, we've recognized that uh. Women in York have provided a consultant's report. We are, we are digesting that. Uh, Mr. Paul in town, who authored that report, is on tonight. You know, you listen to him, might as well, opposed, opposed to hearing any comments or questions. We'll entertain any of those, but we're prepared to respond to uh Mr. Paul's report. As well as W M C report when that comes in. I don't know what the timetable looks like.
So I did talk to, a year ago, right? I did talk to them earlier this week. Um, they commented that they are close, um, but they wouldn't be ready for tonight. And he also apologized, um, the engineer charged with the project. Um, apologized that he's also unavailable tonight, but he will be either listening, which doesn't appear, he's on. Or he'll he'll watch the Zoom and he'll listen to it, but um, I believe that. Um. Mr. Bobey uh accurately reflected that they had made the fault of their comments before. And that if he had commented, he had already seen, you know, that his comments would be, you know, they've been working along through the whole thing.
Yeah.
His comments won't.
Yeah.
Should align with that, and and what he's seen so far has been responsive to the previous comments.
Okay, excellent, but I don't want to speak for him and to look at his report.
I know that, uh, I believe Mr. George, you have a question. Then you have a question. Um, actually, two questions. Um, the rotary area near building three. Um, I'm curious as to the maximum size vehicle that that rotary will accommodate. Just with respect to any trucks that might come in for deliveries or or such. And then the other question that I have uh has to do with um school bus stop. And uh sidewalk access for a school bus stop. And whether or not there's consideration either for a pull-off lane. Um, and or a bus shelter for people that might be waiting either uh for a public or school bus. Um, but with little kiddies in mind, it seems to be that more and more lately. Parents seem to sit with their kids in the car, waiting for the bus to come. Um, and they stay right with their kid until the bus comes. So I'm just kind of trying to think how jammed up it might possibly get. How and that outflow.
Yes, I'll let Bart speak to the rotary in terms of the size of the truck. As far as the school bus access, we would anticipate the school buses to come into the complex. So yeah, there are, there are sidewalks um that that we added. And there are the consideration of the uh consultants and the commissioner last time, all the way up to allow pedestrians to traffic to get to the brown turnpike. Those have been added. And there are, there are actually benches along the way, but there is no bus stop. That, that was decided last time, that was suggested last time. We went with the acceleration and deceleration lane. I'll, I'll let Bart speak, because I think he decided the acceleration, deceleration, proposed bus stop. Go ahead.
You're up, Mark.
What drives you crazy? The kids, the cars, the total bus stops, and then they go up to kiss their parents goodbye, and they come up to the bus and picture your ass.
What drives me crazy is being in a car behind a bus. And I wait for work.
Yeah, I, I really don't know what the policy is for the board education about coming on the private property with their buses. Whether they would use the facility that we have out in front. And we have to provide some parking out there. That's the deal. People decide where they want to come in. If the buses come in and then you pick up, you know, the links or stuff, there's plenty of adequate space for, for people to drop off and pick up. We've all experienced the delay of the bus coming in, so. With regards to the size, yes, obviously a bus can turn around. We, we figured out large vans, large moving vans. Moving through there, we haven't figured full eighteen wheel tractor trailers coming through there, and you'd have to negotiate that curve, or they would have to come across through the site. And that kind of not make the whole switch. But we've adequately sized that for large, we'll need to have some stuff to make sure of that. If you want, I can do some very consistent.
Yeah, that's how I view it, but I do, because I really don't want a bus stopping on the turnpike. I mean, the turnpike is dangerous enough the way it is.
I just don't lose, I don't lose.
I don't know, I just, it's, it's going to be an interesting intersection there, because you're, because you're going to have the whatever that project is, that property, you're going to have that going with the light. Then you're going to have this convenience store, and you're going to have the housing, and the ABC, and the school kids. And then on top of that, probably, what, three hundred feet, five hundred feet down the road is another light? And that's at Wood Lawn and brown turnpike.
Right.
So there's going to be a lot of stuff happening in a very, very small little area of that entrance and exit right there.
But we can get closer looking at it too, honestly.
Well, I mean, I just, it's just, it's my, you know, because I, I know what it's like, I mean, even just to slow down and go, oh, she's a sick jobber. I mean, you know, you better hurry up and get your family over, because somebody's coming right behind you, because the light's going to turn.
Mark touched that, that's where we're looking at acceleration, deceleration, lanes up on the side.
Yeah.
So you don't have to put your brakes on in the middle of traffic, you can go off to the side and start slowing down safely. And the bus pull-up areas off the side will also.
Yeah, we could have traffic slowed down, it's just, you know, sometimes I don't want it all. Okay, all right.
Hey, I'm sorry, comment on this one.
So is it my understanding it's going to be our town trucks doing the stuff?
Yeah.
It's going to be private, same thing with the garbage bin.
Yep, yes.
Okay. My other question is, is I don't know if there's any consideration, if they're doing anything with this yet, but for the electric vehicles? Are there any charging stations in any?
We haven't added them, but that's a good point. We could add some other charging stations.
Because you're going to have a hundred and six units here. Just a thought.
No, 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 it's a, it's a very valid, valid box. I could just see people, you know, like with the extension cord going out the window. They can try to plug the thing.
I just think a little bike store, you have a bike store.
Oh, bike ride, there's some bike, there's something to think about.
But, yeah, we can, we can assign some stuff.
All right, and then, so is that?
That's all we have.
So, that's all we have.
All right. Maureen, I know I'm supposed to be one of, I'm older than this presentation. I don't have anything, because I haven't had, I've had a few things to say that I can, so that they can. Yeah, his time slipped me a little bit.
So I haven't had a, this resort to be me in, so I think he'll give you an overview of his.
Yeah.
But I do want to review it. Give me that one up.
Yeah, okay.
All right, that's the, is that, I, that was my expectation.
Okay.
Andrew has one more, Ms. Miller, Commissioner Miller has one more question. I guess this is for Bart too, so, or is it seeing vehicles to make it down there, a fire truck to make it down there, correct?
Yes.
And do that whole set and everything?
Yep.
Okay. Of course, they'll be coming around the corner, two wheels or, because it ain't.
We will provide tour rates.
I'm kidding, guys, I'm just kidding. Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else right now? Um, so, Mr. Poland. I, I know that you've been waiting patiently online, and I, I do have your report here, but I will be honest, I have not had a chance to thoroughly go through the report. And, but Maureen has advised me that you may want to just do a quick synopsis. Or there may be some points you may want to share with the applicant at this point to help them out with the project going forward, as we're going to be continuing this public here.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Poland here with the firm of Gorman York, based in East Hartford, Connecticut. You do have the report before me, before you, and I'll give a quick summary. The first few pages address specifically the zone change application. And whether or not it complies with the comprehensive plan of zoning, zoning regs, and the map as a development plan. And then also consistency with the plan of conservation and development. My general findings there on the zone change application is that the application does comply with comprehensive plan of zoning and the P O C D. And therefore, I see no issues in that area. The remainder of my plan, my, my report addresses specifically the special permit application and so forth. And I want to thank the applicants for the work they've done on addressing the issues that we raised as part of the prior application and also discussed as part of a pre-application meeting that we had with them. I believe it starts on page five and continues on to page six, where I bullet out approximately ten points that they have addressed from my prior comments, and I'm very pleased with that. Then in the center of page six, I believe I have three or four bullets that make some additional comments related to a concern about the length of the drive in front of the buildings one and two. And a concern related to speeding, so maybe addressing that with speed bumps. I then also asked for details to describe the dumpster screening and dumpster paths to be included in the plans. And then I also asked for a snow removal plan. I think on the previous application, I had said that they should show areas for where snow would be stored. But I think it may actually be more acceptable to just provide a plan on how they will deal with snow removal. And that can be included in the notes, note sections of the plan. Brian Miller did a great job on the affordable housing plan. We had addressed all of my concerns previously, so he just has the updated numbers. I just want to quickly address the Commissioner's question as to his numbers seeming higher than median household income numbers. And the census calculates income in four ways. One is median household income. The next is family income. The third is married couple income, and the fourth is non-family income. This creates confusion in moments like these very often, but ultimately, the state for housing, for housing affordability calculations utilizes the family income calculation. And family income is always significantly higher than household income overall. Madam Chair, your question regarding the sixty percent AMI, while I think, I believe your regulations say units for the affordable units for them to be at or below eighty percent AMI. As Mr. Miller then stated, you cite specifically the eight dash thirty G and the state requirements, which require the sixty percent and the eighty percent AMI. As for the most recent discussion, and this will be my last comment, the most recent discussion on school buses. I recognize the concern, it should be something that should be looked into. But there is often a challenge in getting bus companies to go on the private property. So you may want to look into that, and then I'm sorry, I have one other comment. The, your regulations are silent as to the power wires that run across the property. That was something I generally looked at to see if there's any provision for distance from such wires, and there is not. That being said, I believe the commission members' questions related to that fall under public health, safety, and welfare. And under your special permit discretion, I do think that's a reasonable question for the commission to be, to be asking of the applicant. With that said, that finishes my summary, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much, Dr. Poland. Okay, I think that pretty much allows anyone to answer any other questions. And I believe that Maureen, our attention is to continue this until, not the twentieth of October, but the first meeting in November. The, had requested of me that. State your venue.
We knew there's going to be a few things to update and to show information, so it wouldn't be accomplished in two weeks, so we could just kick it out. Right, and if extension's necessary, providing the extension to it, we can be.
Yeah, okay. I would very much like to do that only, because I want to take into account the different testimony, and then I want to be able to bring this with what I have here before.
I don't believe that extension's necessary, because it will be in thirty-five days or October sixth.
Six, yeah.
November third, so I just, if necessary, but it's that.
Yeah.
So that was November third.
November third is the next meeting.
I will make the motion to table this until, you know, February third here.
Okay, we have a motion to table. We have a second. Okay, Mr. Fiala, you got it there. All right. For the discussion on this, in all those affair, I.
Aye.
Thank you. November third is, Frank, we'll see you guys then.
Thank you.
All right, so now we go into old business. Did you have a question, Dylan? Okay, he's just sitting there probably, what just happened? All right, all right. All right, guys, on to the old business, and first we have the little houses, and that is, we're going to see them October twenty eighth. All right, so do we have a motion for it?
No, they just are not eligible yet.
All right, so basically, and then, of course, we've just had our presentation, or five fifty to five fifty four brown turnpike. And we, we have the motion on that, all right? All right, and then, of course, we have the withdrawal petition. Which was for the planned residential build development. All right, so we're now out of old business, so now we go over.
No, I'm trying to remember what I had. I, I had some good news, I was going to share.
Well, don't worry, oh, can I make some comments? All right, only because, you know, sometimes what we do is, if you see the thing, and this is, I can say for, for the olden deal or whatever. But we do have a chance at the end, if there's anything that's burning that you see in town, you have a question about or a concern about other commissioners, how would you usually try to do before a tournament? We kind of go around, if there's anything to share, you see something that a monk has, you want to clean it up, just raise it to Maureen. So.
And it would really be great if, in addition to our, aside from that, that you have actually raised, like call an officer, send an email or something. Because that's at my hand during the workday, where I put it in the right file and.
But if she gives you the raspberry when you mention it, then you know at the bottom of your email. So, so my comment is, I just have real, the, the night, Steam of Boulevard. Do we have, where the hop house is going in, and your apartment's on top, I guess the people moved in. I thought they were supposed to put shutters or dress out those windows on the upper deck.
My recollection, and I'll look back at the record, but was that our consultant for the architecture review determined that wasn't consistent with the design of the building. That's not stylized, as far as the stylistically, they didn't know, but I, because I remember.
I saw a table with, so I, but I'm.
Yeah, right.
Maybe re, yeah, because there was a discussion about it, I do recall the discussion.
Yeah.
And, but hopefully it was twenty nineteen, but I, but I believe that was the ultimate outcome was that the architectural design wasn't, wouldn't be consistent at.
Yeah, I don't know, I, but I continue.
That consultant, that was, that was Brian Yukes was the consultant.
Yeah, because it just looks very, it just looks very, it could be, I don't know. It's just, anyway, it's not of the style, it's just, well, you know, I mean, it's just not, it's not, it doesn't look finished to me, it just looks there's some, and look, I drive by and I go, there's something missing, what is it? And I say, I think they're supposed to put like little tiny shutters or something on the outside of the windows on the upper deck just to make it look like something other than a blocky kind of a building. But anyway, that was one. And then I really think we ought to look at, amend the zoning regulations, so we don't get four-story buildings in town. That really frightens me. And, I mean, I know we have a proposal in front of us, but four stories, I, you know, we're just going to start looking like every other city. And I think we're going to lose something. And I think, Nikki, you have to have your email corrected.
Yes.
Yes, the last letter is a U in the email, but it was just your Y, right?
Because I did check, I, I understand the top, the top is check the application. Oh, it was probably the, the print of it or something, because it was, because I questioned it.
It was a private, it's my different.
And we just, and we tried, there's no fault here. It's just, you know, we just wanted to make sure that we had it right.
And my last thing.
Well, I was afraid to use a Y arbitrarily, and it go that somebody lives, who knows where, and get all your information.
Oh, I know, we don't want that.
That happened, a friend of mine, it happened too, where they had like one Patty I Y, and it went, and they died. Like all very nice.
And she got all dates after that.
Yeah, but I think was that, if somebody might have been maybe getting busy.
Oh, my goodness.
So I, I, that just happened, so.
And last.
Try one.
Last but not least, because I know the hour's late, last but not least, Dairy Queen. I thought he was going to do something, he put that blue up on top, but then he started wrapping it around the building, and remember, I said to him, oh, no, 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 no. And he said, well, I have to have the blue in the front, but I thought, well, I thought it was just supposed to be in the front square, but now it's kind of, it's crept out. And I, and every time I go by, I just go, ooh, I know we didn't do that. So, and I know he was saying corporate, but I told him, you know, you can tell me corporate, but I know that there's some beautiful Dairy Queens down south in Martha's Vineyard that look like houses and don't look like, you know, like chili dog specials. Anyway, Tim, does anyone else have any comments?
Just, I guess, I guess compliment sandwich right now. Love to see that there's some business going into Bourbon Plaza. But is there facade, anything like that? Because that is one color, it's that.
Really? What are they doing?
It's like a tomato soup orange.
Oh, yes.
Color, that's a good colored color.
Is it?
I miss the old colors.
Oh, no.
I mean, it's hard to complain after that place made vacant for like a decade.
No, you can complain. They got a good seven parkage.
So, so we. Regulating color is problematic.
Yeah.
However, if the, the color is being used as a sign and of the branding, I haven't seen it, so I'll go, like, but if they did, like, the whole facade. It would be one, they did the whole building, so therefore, it's a owner's color choice.
Yeah.
That area of town is not subject to the design standards, either the brown and brown pink design standards, or the farming standard design standards. So I would question any authority I have, or our department has over. We're questioning it, but we'll look at it, make sure that it's not being utilized as branding.
What is going?
I have no idea.
It's a, yeah, it's a family dollar, dollar tree combination. The fir, the first of its kind is actually down in West Haven. So if you want to have a road trip down to my neck of the woods.
Well, that's not interesting.
You can go, well, so it's going to be half half dollar store, your typical low-cost items, it's not really a dollar anymore.
No, they don't pay five.
And half grocery store. There are neighboring items in aisles, it's, you know, it's.
It's almost like an Aldi's kind of thing.
Similar, similar to an Aldi's, um, it's 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 not what you would call your market, it's not necessarily a market. But it does have its typical grocery aisles, dairy, fresh, or frozen goods, produce aisles on one side, and then dollar store.
No, I guess that's a, silver lining, cool.
I I know there's, there's a lot of uh. There's a stigma against the a dollar store and those names.
Yeah.
But I think uh, I think they're trying to avoid from that stigma.
A little bit more classy.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have a doorman. Now we got a glass up there, anyway.
Well, they started with the rock.
Oh, it's the night, right, it's not a glass year color. Anyone else have anything that's caught their attention, I'm sorry, it's just.
Yes, Joan?
Yeah, well, Tim, I fracked her there.
I still don't see my copper uh awnings over those windows in the house of that building, uh on Lower Lane and Farmington Avenue, uh. Uh, they're not even, not even part, not even constructed number, designing them at all. Uh, so I just wonder what's happening with that.
Okay.
So when I looked at it, and I didn't get the chance to go back to the plan, but when I looked at the building, um the. Roofing material over the windows and doors is still just plywood, it's unfinished, it doesn't have a siding on it yet, or a surface. An exterior surface on it, so, so I'm thinking that's what the, I I was thinking it's still under construction, they're still constructing. And we'll we'll be checking on them as they go through, and they'll certainly be checked throughout the rest of the process.
And too, be checking on them.
And before, before COs, we always go and look at both the architecture and the.
Yeah.
Um, or we always try to.
That helps you out, Tim?
I don't wanna say all this.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's being taken care of, no problem.
Yeah, it's on my list, I have looked at it a couple of times. I've been watching, watching.
And and the other thing is that Brolin Stone and Gravel, has that been addressed on Deming Road, um Christian Lane?
Um, I actually talked to the abiding owner that they were encroaching onto. I don't know if we got to that enforcement yet, I doubt it, we have a huge file and still no enforcement officer. So I don't think that actually will help.
I know the city in New Britain was uh uh filing against them on their property, so I'm just.
It was the city of New Britain that I spoke with.
Okay.
To the the city of New Britain about the approaching of the daily, and he was at it, I believe he's been satisfied.
And one other, the Kokomo Project on Main Street, East Brolin, has that ceased, or?
Yes, it has an order, an abatement order from the state, that they can't do anything until they get uh any hazardous. Uh, the the houses, they started to work on it, um asbestos was found, I believe it was asbestos, I don't wanna speak for the building official. But that was stopped, they they can't touch things and anything until they can get through their uh testing requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if we have no further questions or comments from the commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm, I will make that one.
Oh, Ms. Georgie's got the motion, does that mean that Mr. Rogan has to second? And for the record, Fran, it is nine thirty-eight to the evening, and your sufficial, it's over.
Good night from New Hampshire.
All right, bye, you're gonna be here next year, wow, you're gonna be here too. All right, bye now.